The August 23rd, 2023, 8:23:23 City of Calabasas regularly scheduled City Council meeting. Tonight, I am joined by Mayor Pretem Weintraub, Council members Albrecht, Bizagin, and Kraut, as well as staff, our city manager, city attorney, and city clerk. If you'd like to provide public comment and are in person, please complete a speaker card in the back of the room and give it to our city clerk seated right over here. If you're joining us via Zoom, please press Raise Hand or *9 if you're joining via phone and *6 to unmute yourself when the agenda item you'd like to talk about or comment on is presented. For items not on the agenda, please wait for my announcement for oral communication and public comment. When you're called upon to speak, please state your name, the city you live in. You'll be allowed up to three minutes to address the City Council regarding any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of this council. Tonight, we're thrilled to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Beth Hall from our Calabasas Rotary.
Please place your hand, your right hand over your heart and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And tonight is a sad and a special night. We are adjourning tonight our council meeting in memory. I'm sorry. Let me start before I do that. We did meet in closed session prior to the meeting. And does the city attorney have anything to report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council met in closed session considering one item of existing litigation, T N H C Canyon Oaks LLC versus City of Calabasas at all, provided direction of staffing council, and continued the discussion to after the meeting for further discussions. No reportable action is expected. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, as I was saying, tonight, we're adjourning in memory-
Mr. Mayor, my apologies. Approval of the agenda, please.
I'm going by. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? So moved.
Second.
Any council members wish to reorganize or take? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. Mari, we good? Okay. Start again. Tonight, we're adjourning in memory of Myra Turek. She was a longtime member of the Parks and Recreation Commission, which I so proudly served on with her for many years, serving from May of 2000 to September of 2015. Joining us tonight are her family, her daughter Lisa Robertson, Lisa's husband David, and their children Kathleen, Rachel, and Erica. Myra Gail Turek passed away peacefully at her home in Calabasas on May 26, 2023. She is survived by her loving husband, who we all know, Alan Turek, their three children, Elaine, David, and Lisa. Myra was loved by her family and the community. Myra moved to Calabasas with her family from Highland Park, Illinois in 1974. She was deeply involved in the Calabasas community. She was also a member of the Calabasas Chamber of Commerce, the Old Town Coalition, and also the head of the Calabasas Homeowners Association for many years. Alan and Myra ran the Fourth of July Pet Contest at the Calabasas Lake for over 35 years. Myra also worked with her partner Heidi Adams and sold real estate in Calabasas. She loved Calabasas, and you can often see her driving with her personalized license plate reading 91302. Myra was very proud to call Calabasas her home and will be sorely and tremendously missed. I'll go ahead and turn to council comments. Councilmember Kraut.
I'd like to extend my condolences to the family and also thank you for allowing Myra to be of service to the community. I know that's taken her time away from family to spend giving back to the community, but that's what we do here in Calabasas, and it's great to see such a fine example of that. She will be missed.
Thank you. Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you. I too share your sympathies and your swollen heart. Many of us in this room know what it's like to be on commissions and serve the city in so many capacities. She's a perfect example of that. I wish I got to know her a little bit more. I knew of her, and she was always well-liked and well-loved, so I'm sorry to hear what happened.
Thank you. Councilmember Bizagin.
Yes, I knew Myra going back over 25 years and Alan, and I know how active they were in the community. Myra was actually my appointee to the Parks and Recreation Commission for many of those years, and I know how much she cared about the parks and the recreational services. And her activeism in the community was, goes back to pre-cityhood, when she was involved in the incorporation drive. So she'll be missed by many of us, and my condolences to the family.
Mayor Pretem Weintraub.
Just wanted to express my condolences to Myra's family. I think everyone in Calabasas knew who she was. She had such a presence and was involved in so many things. And the way I got to know her was really from the Fourth of July Pet Show, and it was just such a happy occasion that brought everyone together, and I'm really sorry for your loss.
And I'll just indicate, the first time I got to know of Myra was before I served with her on the Park and Recreation Commission. It was being in the city, shopping in a local grocery store, going by a park bench, and seeing this famous Realtor all over the place because she was way ahead of her time with the promotion. And then had the pleasure to work with her for many years on the Park and Recreation Commission at that time, as it was known. And as we've all stated, the pet show at the Fourth of July is something very special. The family kept it going there this year, and Alan revived it, and Alan was there, which was so important as well. And we'll always, always have fond, wonderful thoughts of your mother and Alan of your wife. And we send our thoughts and prayers to you, and we have a certificate we'll give to you. Before I do, I'll ask if there are any members of the public wishing to speak on this item. Madam Clerk.
No, Mr. Mayor, but I know that Lisa would like to say-
Lisa, would you like to say a few words on behalf of the family?
Hi, everyone. I'm Lisa Robertson, Alan and Myra Turek's youngest daughter. I mentioned to my mom's, one of my mom's closest friends, Sheila Zero, that my mom was going to be adjourned tonight at the meeting, and she wrote me something, and I thought it was really nice because it described my mother, and so I just wanted to read that to you. So, "Myra was a great example for women as a dear friend, a community activist, a devoted wife and mother, a playmate for us tennis players, a happy and warm social friend. She worked with the City Council and in her real estate business, and she was confident, clear in her vision, and accepting of other people's ideas. Myra was kind and honest to her clients, and her enthusiastic way of expressing herself was sometimes convincing and other times off-putting." People who disagreed. Myra was able to carry the opposites of agreements and disagreements, and she would think through both sides of a problem. She developed friends and fulfilled her promise as a model for women in, of our community." Thank you. And I miss her.
Thank you so much. I'm going to present the certificate to you and the family. Thank you to all the family, and as our sheriffs know, Alan used to drive around in the volunteer sheriff's car trying to write tickets for everyone. All right. We'll move on to presentations, and tonight, we have Chief Drew Smith here with us tonight on behalf of the Fire Department to give us an update. Welcome, Chief.
So to start off, your fire family's doing good. We weathered through the storm, operational. We were ready. We were prepared, and we only had rock and debris flow, but no major incidents throughout the area, so we're very pleased with that. Earlier in the month, we were able to host a viewing of the campfire, which happened in paradise, and so I know that some of you attended that, so I appreciate you being there. Just for our law partners with Lost Hills, CHP, Office of Emergency Management, we really had no agenda going into this besides having 70 people show up so we could just have a free forum after about what we're, need to prepare for and what the reality is in the Santa Monica Mountains on notifications and that community interaction and how we all play a significant role in the life safety component for wildfires. We gear up towards this wind-driven fire season, as you know, that happens. The, really, the planning that you've done, I could say, with your EOC training is highly important, and we favor that. We really enjoy that interaction with the EOC and all the, bless you, the interactions with the command and general staff and how that works because in a classroom pace compared to emergency base, it's significantly different, and when you can get outpaced, it's nice to have the lesson before the test, so that's what we really look forward to. So, the cooperative agreement that we have with the Sheriff's Department, CHP, our public work partners, all of our cities, City Calabasas really appreciate you being proactive in that, that life safety component. So, I bet one of the big questions is, what does the four inches of rain do for us? Anybody thinking that? Yeah, nothing. It knocked the dust off the plants, let's say, so our fuels that are here are very smart, and they don't take in a lot of moisture. And so, if you get a half an inch of rain, two inches of rain, four inches of rain, which we received, those fuels are not triggered to really take that in is because they don't want to take all that in and then freeze as we get into winter. So we know whether we're in a drought year or above-average year for our rainfall, when San Ana winds blow, we average eight red flag events of fire season, so from October 1st to December, the vulnerability is still the same. So we do, and I know if you've heard me talk about it before, but I'll revisit it, is we do a daily fire danger analysis to look at past climatology, current climatology, and forecasted climatology, coupled with or matched with 100 years' worth of fire history, so it can really fine-tune when our relative risk is and our large fire growth occurs on a regular basis. And that's when we start the communications chain for notifications that we have a potential high-fire danger day. So with that, I will see if there's any questions from any of you.
Thank you very much. Any council comments or questions? Councilmember Albrecht.
Couldn't be happier with all the participation and coordination of all the services. I think we were all, before Woolsey, immune to what would, what would it look like? It was more like reading a book than a reality show, but that really changed everybody, and it was obvious the days, the couple of days when everybody started to evacuate, that the agencies weren't talking to each other. There were a lot of issues that we knew about, and then we were going to look to repair, and it's, we've done that in such a great way in your department and your help. It's made a huge difference. Practicing does make perfect, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Mayor Pretem Weintraub.
I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you and everyone at the stations are doing to serve Calabasas.
All right, thank you. I'll just go ahead and say thank you also for everything you're doing. That movie was, that documentary, it wasn't anything but a documentary, it was very powerful. Thought it was very important to see. It was primarily the Paradise Fire, the campfire up, up in Northern California, and that was directly around the timeline of what occurred in Lahaina and Maui. And we are coming up on our five-year anniversary, obviously, of the Woolsey Fire, the worst fire we've ever seen, at least in our modern history as a city. So, being prepared is the most important thing we can do and working together with you and Engine Company 68125, and everyone is truly appreciated, and thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate the support, we really do.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, are there any questions or comments from the members of the public on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then we can thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll turn to the next report, which we have presentation by the Sheriff's J Team. And we have limited you to an hour tonight.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. I am Deputy Curiel, and we are the members of the Juvenile Intervention Team at Lost Hill Station. We have Deputy Gloria Lee and Deputy Jun Lee. As you guys know, the juveniles team is, our focus is school safety, youth safety, and just this summer, we had projects going on the schools, and so we're going to have our deputies talk a little bit about what we did over the summer and what we do throughout the school year with our youth in schools.
Good evening. So, we understand that we live in troubling times now. I'm sure you guys see on the news with these mass shootings all over the country, and oftentimes, the victims are our youth, and oftentimes, the scene of this carnage is the school campus. So, this summer, as a project, and we did this last summer as well, is campus safety. And so what we do is we do safety walkthroughs on these, at LVUSD, Santa Monica, Malibu, University School District, and some private schools, about 30 schools in total. And basically, we meet with the admin there, we discuss their fencing, their access gates, the cameras, and monitoring systems, building identification, so emergency services can clearly identify these buildings if there was an incident, and, and the practical utilization of these security systems. It's, it's nice that we have fences and cameras, but we really need the, the staff and the admin to train to, to use these and utilize these cameras to prevent people from coming on campus. Also, we do critical information packets. Every patrol unit at our station receives a critical information packet, and basically, it lays out the school very broadly. It gives campus administration direct contact information, basic or, or general student population numbers to see what kind of resources we need, what kind of population we're dealing with, staff population, and the basic campus layout. We also have a map of the campus, and we also lay, lay out emergency shut-off locations, so if there's an earthquake or fire, we need to shut off gas, electricity, stuff like that. Also, for, for the schools, we, we host critical incident scenario exercises. So we have the administration meet, and we basically lay out a, a critical incident scenario, usually an active shooter, where it starts off as something small outside of the school and kind of progresses onto someone on campus as an active shooter. And the scenario-based training, the goal is to understand, utilize, and follow standard procedures for soft lockdowns, hard lockdowns, maintaining hard lockdowns, once you're on a hard lockdown, what the classroom does, what the teachers do, and also procedures for the conclusion of a lockdown. The, the lockdowns, there's no real, like, procedure set in place, so this is kind of a, a way that we can kind of just show everyone, like, what we can do, what procedures we can have to, to keep our students safe in the event something terrible happens.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Deputy Lee Gloria, the other Lee. So, a part of what the J Team does as well, we respond to calls for service, dealing with any juveniles, okay, whether that's in the community or at the schools. A lot of the calls for service we deal with may be drug possession. What we do with that, we, we come to the campus, we speak to administrators, and we're bounded by the law. We don't necessarily treat students like serious criminals or suspects like that, but we try to work with the, with the student, engage with them, find out where they may get their substances from, and we try to focus on getting the adults, stopping it from continuing to penetrate our communities. That's what we do, and then we'll actually do the follow-up, we'll file cases with those adults, where we've, we've done several warrants, connecting us from our students to these people out on the streets, bringing it into our communities. We also do a lot of, so when we respond to the schools, we're either going to counsel the students, we're either going to determine if there, there was a crime, or we may work with our mental evaluation team, the MET team, and determine if the student is experiencing any type of crisis, if they need to be placed on a 55-85 hold. And with that, we also do a lot of threat assessments. Like my partner was saying, given the climate, the tragic incidents that have occurred in our nation, we take our threat assessments very seriously. What is a threat assessment? It's pretty much either a student or a staff member, administrator, they're concerned with something from within the school, there may be some type of threat, whether that's a student saying that he wants to shoot someone or stab someone, or they may have some type of dark fixation on something. We come to the school, we work with the teachers, the counselors, we actually go back to the home, we check out the bedroom with consent, we do consent searches with the parents, we make sure, we see if the, if the kid may need some mental evaluation done, or if it was just kids joking, or if they just need a counseling session, or if we actually, if it has risen to the level of a crime. And if it has, it's usually, it would be like a criminal threats type of crime, and we also do weapon searches at these homes because a lot of the teachers are very concerned, the parents are very concerned, but we also want to clear these students too. If they're kind of just being innocent kids, playing around, maybe they like video games, that is a part of our job. A lot of these threat assessments takes, it takes a lot of time. Patrol deputies, they don't always have the time to really, really do everything thoroughly. They may not know the student's history, they may not be familiar with the counselors, they may not know how to actually kind of maneuver all the steps that's stated in the threat assessment packet, including the consent, consent to search the homes, including contacting mental evaluation, including working, working with our major crimes unit. If there's something that we don't have access to, maybe they do. Maybe they know a history, if they came from out of state, and we only have access to the LA County database or something like that. We also, and we'll, we'll document everything that we do. We'll either do the 55-85 holds, or we do a criminal report, or we just take our detailed notes and follow up later on with the families or the, or the teachers and see how this student has progressed. A lot of other things that we deal with are fights on campus. We try to be very respectful of the school and the environment, and we try not to disrupt it as much as we can. We'll respond to the school, we'll talk to the teachers, and we'll make sure the parents respond, but we're, we're trying, we're getting away from trying to handcuff the students, taking them away, taking them to the jail, embarrassing them, getting them involved with the, the system. So what we would typically do is follow up later. We'll do book-in-by-appointments, we'll get all the details we need, and if they do need to be fingerprinted or arrested or something like that, we do it after school. That's what we do. We try to protect the integrity of the school and of the students. Also, we work hand-in-hand with the YAP program, Youth Advocate Program. It's pretty much diversion. That's what we focus on in our communities, diversion, a lot of kids, they make a lot of mistakes, and we're not here to just build criminal records for them. We know that kids make mistakes. We always put the emphasis on their future, them going to college, maybe the military, and we try to counsel them and let them know that you made a mistake, there are consequences for it, but we're here to help you. And working with the Youth Advocate Program, it's a community-based organization where it's tailored to the student, what are their needs? Do they need counseling? Do they need tutoring? Maybe they don't have parents in their life, maybe some, some of the students actually have parents who were incarcerated or, you know, have passed away. So we do a lot of referrals to the, to the Youth Divergent Program, and then, once they successfully complete the program, we also assist the parents and the students with sealing that record up. Yeah, that's pretty much, and any, anything you can think of, even sexual incidents, we work with the students. We, we spend a lot of time talking to several students at a time. A lot of the patrol deputies do not have that time to do that because they have so many other calls for service. But the J Team, that's where we come into play. We actually give our cell phone numbers to the principals, to the administrators, they call us, anything they need. We try to be that bridge before it even gets to dispatch. They're calling us, they're texting us, or even if it's not a major incident or a major crime, it's, hey, what do we do? Maybe they just need counseling, or maybe they do need us to respond, or maybe they do need us to just kind of show our presence to keep the, the students in order as well. Yes, and thank you guys for having us tonight. I think this is a great position for all of us. I really appreciate being a part of the Juvenile Intervention Team, it gives us a lot of, for me, a lot of purpose. I think that for us to mitigate the crime in our areas, things like, it starts with the youth, and I think it's been a very important team to have at Lost Hills.
That's great, and thank you very much, and I'm going to jump in before I turn to council comments and questions and say, we have a mayor's youth council in the city, 14 to 21-year-olds. Love to have you come to a meeting and present to them. They're amazing, but it really would be helpful and, and a positive group to speak to. I'll turn to council, Mayor Pretem Weintraub.
Thank you guys so much for being here and for everything you do. I just have a few questions. Is, does somebody from the station or through the J Team monitor social media, that things taking place in Calabasas for the youth?
Yeah, typically, not, well, only when we get a call for service. So if some, there's an incident that occurred and a social media account was involved, for instance, drug dealing, if they have a, a dealer through social media, then we'll get warrants to monitor those social media accounts, and that's how we get our adult dealers that are bringing these, the drugs to the campus.
Like, I didn't know if there's a tag on social media that says, like, "Shooting Calabasas High." Like, does that alert anyone in law enforcement?
Uh, typical, there's, it's so, it's so much on, on social media, so typically, the school needs to be notified of it first, or maybe a student hears about it, sees it, and tells somebody, and then we're made aware, and then that's when we conduct our investigation.
And then my other question is, if there's a disturbed student, like, acting out, I don't know, like, gets on your radar, and you go to the home, and there's a weapon in the home, is that weapon taken away, or what happens?
So, is the weapon secured? Is it legally registered to the owners? That's what we look at. And then we also see if the kid has access to it. Is there a code, or was it just kind of lying around? And we can assess it there and potentially address the parent and if, if they are allowing the kid to have access to something like that.
And if, if there's a case of like a mental illness, and they had to be hospitalized because they're a dangerous cell for others, then if there are weapons in the house, we try to retrieve that firearm, even if it's a parent that has it. We try to work with parent, hey, until this is over, maybe we can keep it for safekeeping. Ultimately, it is the parent's decision because it's their, it's their firearm, but if there's any other firearm in the house, it would be confiscated if it wasn't, uh, it didn't belong to anyone in the house.
And then my last question. If you receive a call for service from the schools about a troubled individual, but they live in LAPD jurisdiction, do you follow through, like, do the home visit and everything and see the case, like, from start to finish, or do you turn it over to LAPD?
So typically, we wait for them to come to campus because they're, they're a student at the school, so we'll meet with them at the school. If it involves further investigation and we're, and the crime or whatever incident or social disturbance happened at the school, then we will, we'll follow up on that, and we will go out of, out of area.
Okay.
We've done that several times already. Luckily, we haven't had to go too far, but yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any other council comments or questions? Councilmember Kraut.
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you for all that you do. It's fantastic that we've got a team like you and, and the men and women working with you that, that help our youth here in the community. I did have a question on the active shooter, shooter drills that you mentioned. I know we had one up in the Lupin Hill School not long ago, and we did get some comments back from some of the neighbors up higher on the hill that they were rather shocked at the event and didn't get notice. Could you tell us a little bit about the noticing policy, and is there any way that that could be expanded to include, and I don't know how far you'd expand in the neighborhood or if you're notifying the, the parents so that people know that that's happening, or if there's pros and cons of not doing that? If you could share a little more on that?
Yeah, so the, the station goes out of their way to notify the community precisely because of that. We don't want citizens thinking that there's something going on at the school. They do take measures to notify them. Um, they do take measures to notify them. Social media, um, through our website as well. Um, and there are large signs posted throughout the scenarios as well, um, around the campus, so that anyone driving by and sees patrol cars, deputies walking around, will know that there is a, um, scenario going on. Yes.
We'd like to get to everybody and notify everybody so they're, they, they all are aware. So, um, for the people that are in charge of planning future events, we'll definitely look into, uh, other avenues and possibly getting the word out a little better next time.
Yeah, if I could just throw out a suggestion in that realm. Uh, the, the complaints that I heard came from people that were older in our community, less likely to be on social media and such. So when we do, uh, like, let's say, development projects here in the city, we notify by mailing anybody within five hundred feet or something like that. It might be something to consider, just to make sure that we don't have, uh, you know, shocked community members when they hear the simulated gunfire and see sirens everywhere.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Buzajin.
Yes, I too wanted to thank you. I don't have a question, but I did want to say that in my experience, the J Team sometimes is the most important part of law enforcement, because you interact with people at a very young age. And I know it's a very difficult, uh, I, I worked in the juvenile court system for a while, and it's just one of the most difficult things, so I appreciate everything you do for the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Aubrey.
Yeah, I want to thank my fellow council members, they were very good questions. It's, um, you know, having the J Team, i- it's amazing. Law enforcement has come so far, rather than just pursuit. Um, you know, you're here to help, and I know as students, uh, when you see an officer, it, it always means a problem somewhere, but it doesn't necessarily mean that when you're helping and you're listening. Um, and it gives them a good feeling about what you represent and, and openness. So, well, we're very, very lucky, uh, to have the team, and the way it's evolving is amazing. So, just be safe, and thank you.
And I'll just say again, uh, joining everyone else echo the sentiments, and thank you for all your great work. And again, the, the most important work you're doing at a very vulnerable time for a lot of our youth. So, we appreciate it, we look forward to continuing to work together. Thank you very much. All right, well, um, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, are there any members of the public who wish to address this item?
No, Mr. Mayor, no.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move on to our next presentation. We have a lot of great presentations tonight, is by the Rotary Club of Calabasas, our very own Neighbor in Need program, Neighbors in Need program with Manny Fernandez, the Calabasas Rotary Foundation, who will make the presentation. Welcome.
Welcome, and good evening to the council and Honorable Mayor. Thank you so much, it's so good to be back here in person. Glad I'm not in the Zoom room anymore, that's so nice. So, um, Mari, let me, ah, perfect, thank you, and this is my little guy right here. So, um, here before the council, um, for me, old and new faces, to bring you guys up to speed on the Neighbors in Need program that we do in partnership with the city. Um, this is a program that we've had for a number of years, and, um, I'd like to make sure my, I'm afraid not.
It's not as easy as it looks, Manny.
It's like pulling teeth.
And your day job is, I'm sorry?
Pulling teeth, I guess. Um, but yes, so, ah, there you go. I'll just, ah, it's working now. Yes, it's working now. Ah, good, very good. All right, so, um, like I said, I wanted to, uh, present to the council members sort of what this is all about, the history, our successes, who we serve, um, because I know of, uh, a number of you aren't familiar with it, because you haven't been around as long as we have, and some of us here. Um, so, gonna cover, uh, who, uh, Neighbors in Need serves, um, why we do it, how's it administered, uh, why is it needed, and, you know, who are the type of recipients that, uh, we're able to help here. So, a little, ah, I just got to point it at that computer, there you go. So, what is it? Well, this goes back, this program goes back sixteen years. Um, back then, the City of Calabasas used to have their own, uh, community outreach programs. It, uh, was administered at, uh, various, uh, council meetings throughout the year. And, um, this came out of the city looking to get better outreach to people and to avoid some of the issues that the city had. So we formed what's called the City Calabasas Rotary Club Partnership Agreement to take on some of your community outreach programs, of which Neighbors in Need, um, is a part. So, um, we started this sixteen years ago. It's actually been, uh, very successful, um, and it's had its ups and downs, but I'm going to go through where we've been, where we're going, and how our ups have been since we last spoke last, uh, year, when we talked about, uh, changing our, uh, outreach to the community to get the program known. So fundamentally, um, this is about getting aid to people who have short-term financial stressors, uh, for residents of Calabasas. So what is the Neighbor in Need Grant Program all about? Well, we serve, uh, the residents with three different types of grants. Um, the outreach grants, the emergency grants, and the support grants. Um, the outreach grant is our newest program that we instituted a little bit over a year ago, and the goal of this is to be a very simple, straightforward, small urgent need, uh, program, so that people can get groceries, bus passes, um, minor vehicle repair, uh, repair expenses, and that sort of thing. Um, most of our inquiries from this come from distributions of cards and postcards that we have at the sheriff's station, uh, we have at the senior centers, uh, all the local schools, um, have our information on hand. We actually even have some of these sitting at the counter of, uh, the offices here in, uh, Calabasas. Um, and this, um, was something that we started a little over a year ago to get a better outreach, um, and not to think people had to go through a big process, and it always had to be a big need, because sometimes little needs are just as important as the large needs. And so this has been a, uh, nice success for us that, uh, we started, just I said, a little over last year. The other types of grants that we have are the emergency grants. Uh, these are our most requested grants, because this, uh, covers basically the meat of the program, which is Neighbors in Need is meant to help people through short-term financial stresses because of circumstances they don't have control over, whether it's a loss of a job, loss of spouse's support, um, sorry, some sort of, uh, unexpected medical need or other things like that. So these are the bulk of the grants that we give out, probably ninety percent of them. Um, you can see here on the slide, these are the areas that we cover specifically, um, in this regard. Typically, these grants are up to twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, in emergency support, which in the old days, you could do a lot, but these days, you can't quite do so much. Next, we have the support grants, and the support grants are, um, similar to the emergency grants in terms of need, but the circumstances are a lot different. Um, so our support grants over the years are typically for people who are working but may have reduction in hours, are laid off. So instead of to cover a big expense like a water heater going bad, that they can't repair, or a roof leak from rains that they cannot repair, this is somebody who has a monthly shortfall in income. So we give them monthly stipends to meet their shortfall until their circumstances improve. So this is the, um, other significant grant that, uh, we give, and their support can last anywhere from three to six months, depending on their needs. Uh, again, the, uh, maximums that we typically award total from between two and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-five hundred for these as well. So, how do we deliver these grants on behalf of the City of Calabasas? Well, we rely on a number of, uh, public relations and, uh, outreach, as you were. As I mentioned, the postcards, but, uh, word of mouth is very powerful, um, in this. Um, we have had lots of referrals by city staff over the years, where people come here saying, I'm having trouble, does it, like, what, 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 I don't know what to do. And thankfully, uh, the, um, uh, employees here and the city staff know about us and our program, and will give us direct referrals. Uh, in the past, we got a lot of referrals from the, uh, community center, so we're very glad that it's going to shortly, uh, be back as well. And as I said, we have good contacts with the local schools as well, who sometimes hear of issues that families are having through their kids. So these are how things have been referred to us, along with the occasional things from the sheriffs and fire stations. So, when, um, people know that there is a program that the city has for them, they are directed, uh, either to our website or to the other resources that we have, so that they can appropriately get the information and apply for these. So our website has downloadable forms for the support and emergency grants, and it also has the online application for the outreach grant. As I mentioned, that particular grant is meant to be something that we can act on in twenty-four to forty-eight hours for a small, um, monetary need, and it has a, uh, online application for that. So there's a number of details on our websites that gives them the information of the outreach grant, the support grant, and the emergency grant. We have a telephone, uh, number that they can leave messages that we respond to typically within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Thank you so much, Bet, for all your support on that. So that we can act quickly. So, one of the things about the program that's very interesting is that people that are having unexpected problems, frankly, are very embarrassed to let people know that they're having problems. And so, one of the things has been paramount since the advent of this program and the work of our committee, is to ensure confidentiality of all the applicants. And it's not just for their comfort, but it's also to remove any potential, uh, biases or anything that might be, uh, might come up in terms of people thinking, oh, if they knew who I am, they'll never help me, or, you know, oh, if they know who I am, I'll help me for sure. We really want to, again, get out of any conflicts of interest, uh, in that regard. So as such, our entire process, other than the, um, interview portion of our direct, uh, committee, uh, meetings with the applicants for the support and emergency grants, confidentiality is ensured, everything is redacted when their application is forwarded to our board for approval, and in the summaries that I'm going to give here, uh, tonight on some of the thank yous a little bit later. So again, um, it's unfortunate there is this stigma, thinking that here I am in Calabasas, an affluent area, and I'm having problems, um, but it's significant to the degree that sometimes people procrastinate two and three months before they seek, uh, aid, and it actually just snowballs into a more significant situation. So how many have been helped? Well, this program's been running for sixteen years, if you can believe it, since we started. I know Mayor Shapiro and Councilmember Buzajin are well aware of this. And we have actually helped over a hundred and ten families in this time, in, in various manners. So, um, we have been very, very fortunate to be and, uh, work on behalf of the city of this. I mean, you guys have supported us significantly over those years. And, um, in addition, I want to do a side part of our program is also these community grants that we do. And, um, we also do aid for local serving communities, uh, serving, uh, five oh one C threes, such as Meals on Wheels and the Boys and Girls Clubs, to also help residents in Calabasas for their programs. But by and large, um, all our, uh, city outreach has been on behalf of these, uh, residents who have the financial need. Now, one of the things that's upcoming is, you know, we are worried about the ending of the, uh, rent situations in the city, and our current activity has peaked quite a bit with people now that the, um, uh, local landlords in the area no longer, um, are required to be, um, understanding in their relationships. So, um, I want to let you know the types of things that we take care of, and these are, uh, some of the history from our, um, awards that we have given. We've had emergency grants to assist parents whose child's, uh, had unexpected injuries, and their medical costs could not be met. A common one is a resident is behind on rent, um, temporarily out of work because of either a disability or some other situation, and we've been able to bridge them to prevent being evicted. COVID obviously had a big impact on people's work, and in spite of, um, all the things in place that helped people out in terms of rent deferment, we still had, uh, issues with people that still had significant shortfalls because of that. So, um, one of our grants had to do with, uh, somebody who was a disabled parent, uh, with two, uh, children in dire need, and we were able to help them up very much so until they could get, uh, back working again from the disability. Um, you know, you have a lot of seniors in some areas of this, uh, city, and I talked about the water, uh, and roof leaks before, so these types of physical repairs, I'm sorry, I speak fast. Some of these physical repairs that they cannot even begin to undertake. Not only do we help fund them, but we also will help give them referral sources on how to get things done. A lot of people don't know even how to begin to call a contractor to fix a roof on a mobile home. So, um, we help direct them for that. I do want to also point out, when people come to us for aid, we also have resource of local things that they can do, like the West Valley Food Pantry, we give them referrals for the food stamp program, or what SNAP, or whatever it's called these days, so that they understand there are things out there to also help them through these tough times. But most importantly, we always let them know this is a city-funded program that we are just administer, um, an, an ministerial agency for on your behalf. So, um, one of the things we do ask is that, um, you know, they thank you, and I have some very glowing thank yous at the end here. Uh, getting back to the outreach grants, as I mentioned, this is our newest program that's been big in our resurgence in these five hundred, up to five hundred dollar grants. So many of these things have gone to, um, s- families with students to make school book expenses, educational expenses, city transportation, and that sort of thing. Um, so, we are very, um, happy that this has turned into something, uh, very, um, very active. So, one of the things in our agenda is, why do we do this? Why do we do this? It's to make an impact for the people in Calabasas. And since the advent of this program, the goal was to really let people know that you, as a city, care about their residents and are here to help them through. And we have really such appreciation from the people that have benefited from this program, um, that I do want to take the time to share a few of their specific thank yous. Because this is a very rare thing that you guys do. I want you to acknowledge that this, I don't think any cities anywhere have anything like what this is, and let alone anything that makes an impact that's significant to, um, a number of people here. So this is, um, a collection of some thank yous, I'm going to read some highlights. Thanks again so very, very much for this most blessed outreach grant on behalf of the City of, and Calabasas Rotary Foundation. And what a touch of class for your members' unfathomable kindness to meet me today and personally deliver the check. Support and encouragement you have all provided has no monetary equivalent, and I am forever grateful and hoping to share with you some good news soon. Thank you again for your time and support, and I hope someday I'm soon put in a position where I can pay it forward. I cannot express my thanks for being able to receive this grant. It has truly been a lifesaver, and I hope to be able to volunteer and help the Rotary Club when I get back on my feet. So, these are genuine heartfelt, heartfelt thanks we get from, um, the people that are recipient of the aid. Because, you know, our goal of Rotary is to make a difference, and so we are so blessed to have the support of the city, so that we can go out there and touch lives of people that live in the City of Calabasas. And, um, hopefully, what I presented today has given you some of the technical background on why it's here, its, um, successes, um, and how well it's been effective, um, here as well. And so I just want to give a big personal thanks, um, to being able to administrate this program over the time that we've had it. Look forward to continuing in the future with the dynamic and changing needs that are ongoing, uh, in the City of Calabasas, and ask for questions as I say a big thank you.
And we're going to say thank you back, Manny, and, and to Bet and Sally, and, and to the entire Rotary Foundation and Calabasas Rotary Club. Uh, you do so much good for the community year round, and we're thrilled that we have this partnership where you administer this, and much more than just administer.
Thanksgiving's coming up.
The Neighbors in Need Fund, and we really appreciate it, I truly appreciate it, and I'll thank you, and we look forward to many, many, many more years of this going forward. Turn to council questions and comments, uh, Mayor Pretem Weintraub.
Just wanted to say thank you to you and everyone at the Rotary Club. It was such a good presentation, and it really, um, showed how the money's being distributed, and it's great need. So, um, you're such wonderful ambassadors of this program and do such a good job on behalf of the city. I just wanted to say a heartfelt thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you so much, it's our pleasure.
Thank you. Councilmember Buzajin.
I too wanted to thank you. For those who didn't know, prior to this, uh, grant program, people used to come here at different meetings and ask, and it was so hard because some of us had connections to the people asking, and there were all types of considerations that maybe shouldn't have been made, so we thought we'd give it to a, a third party to do, and you guys have done a great job administering it. So we, we appreciate the service you give to the city, as well as to the, uh, to the people you help.
Thank you. Councilmember Kraut.
I too want to say thank you to all of you. Um, I do have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
When the gas company prices... When the gas company prices spiked this winter, one of the comments that I made up here was, we have the Neighbors in Need Program, and you should have heard the gasp in the room, because we don't only imagine 25,000 residents coming to you for some extra money. Did you see an uptick in requests at that period in time?
So, specifically in that period, no. Okay? One of the things you mentioned is, one of the things that has been something we've tried to thread the needle on right sizing, because like you said, obviously we could not handle that many requests, and we hate to say no, you know? Because again, we don't want somebody to say, oh, I got help from, and then, oh, I got turned down. But this is why we've been trying to focus our advertising, for lack of a better word, to outlets that are right-sized for us. But that type of announcement is fantastic. We did not get a particular spike. I don't know if, because at that time, I don't think our outreach grants were necessarily operational yet, so they didn't fall into like the emergency thing, and somebody didn't want to go through a formal application. Because we do a lot of due diligence, and, you know, we want to make sure that the need is legitimate, and so, I don't want to say there are hoops, but, you know, you have to be open to presenting financial situations to us, because we want to responsibly spend and allocate the city's money. But, I mentioned the community center, when we had, myself and Beth had met with Kindon Meek, talking about the community center. That has been such a big resource, because it's such a huge dissemination of information. And one of the things that gave, sort of created part of our slowdown, when we had some more of our slower activity in the program, was directly related to the closing of the community center, because they really, we would get at least one or two referrals a month from them, not just from their community board postings, but just like, people come to the city council to ask, can I help? They ask at the community center, and it's a bigger, there's a, like I said, there's a much bigger, friendlier face there to ask. It's less threatening than to walk into the city council to ask for help. So, but no, we did not see a spike, but we actually appreciate any word you can get out on that, and let us handle it.
Well, thank you. And your answer was beautiful, and it leads into my second and last question, which is, how many legitimate requests do you have that you want to fulfill, that you have to turn down? And a better way to say it is, how's our budget for you? Do we need to increase that?
So at the moment, the budget is adequate, because we have a small surplus of unspent funds through some of the low times. What's going to be interesting is how we've started this year already. We're only six weeks in, and we already have allocated in excess of $5,000 in grants. And so, it's going to tell us on how the changing in the rent situations and the grace periods, and, is going to change that. So right at the moment, we are adequately funded at the level that we have in the past. But in the next six months, we may see a dynamic that changes that significantly.
Okay, well, between February and June, we'll be deciding our next fiscal year's budget, so if you have feedback between now and then, please share that with our city managers so that we're prepared at the next budget crisis, or schedule.
Great.
Thank you. Councilmember Kraut. P. Albrecht. Sam, I liked your statement so much, I called on you again.
Thank you for tonight, coming here and speaking with us. You know, it's amazing, the times that I've been to Rotary. And it's not just in this city, but it's around the world, and it really helps people who have hardship. And you never know when that hardship's going to come, in what form, or, when it strikes, it strikes. So, to know that you're here, and we support you, and look to help if you need more, and couldn't be happier, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, your club.
Yep. I really appreciate that, because we are here to make a difference, and we can't do it alone, and so our partnership is very valuable with us. And put on your agenda Thanksgiving, because that's our next big event.
It's one of the best events, and I do want to just support what Councilmember Kraut said, which is, and again, never too early to start planning for the budget for next year for our council. So, again, thank you, thank you, and thank you for this great report and all the good you do. Keep it, keep it up.
Thank you so much.
Don't pull any teeth, just keep giving out support and help.
Exactly. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I should have checked with you, even though I know there's no one with raised hands, just checking.
No, Mr. Mayor, there's no comments.
All right, thank you so much. We'll turn to council member announcements, we'll turn to Mayor Pretem Weintraub.
I wanted to start by thanking staff for all of the storm preparation work that they did. I think it made a huge difference in Calabasas, so thank you to everyone. I know they worked all weekend, ensuring that our roads were clear and that no downed trees, so huge thank you to our staff. Also want to thank Supervisor Horvath and her staff for continuing to check in on the city. It was very, it was very appreciated to know that we have a partner at the county, so thanks to Supervisor Horvath and her staff. And also to announce that next Tuesday, August 29th, David and I will be at Crossroads, supporting the restaurant, promoting community, and an opportunity to meet with the mayor and Mayor Pretem, just in a really casual environment. Everyone from the council's invited, everybody from the community. So, happy hour at Crossroads from 3:00 to 5:00. We look forward to seeing everybody, to support a relatively new business, and one that is doing great things in our community.
When is this? I'm sorry.
When is it?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, August 29th, from 3:00 to 5:00.
Thank you very much. And Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Public Works as well. We're so lucky. It started off real slow. I actually played golf Sunday morning, and nothing happened, and little by little, and poof, 3.92 inches later, not much happened around the city, I think, by great preparation. I mean, we had things that happened, but, you know, preparing the sore spots and knowing where they are, and being alerted to it, so, great job. Just a couple of other announcements. One, the California Senior Center has an end of the summer Caribbean bash at the Civic Center Plaza coming up, and that's going to be next Friday, from 6:00 to, I believe it's 9:00 o'clock. So that should be a lot of fun. Whenever on the plaza, it's always great. The last concert of the series this Sunday will be Polish Your Groove, and I name all the groups that I used to listen to on my transistor radio. Sam Cooke, The Temptations, The Spinners, Marvin Gaye, and Blood, Sweat &amp; Tears, among many others. So it's going to be, I'll be there gassing out with my wife. And the Chamber has an interesting group for women, I just want to make that announcement that they, this is just a group for women, and it's a good opportunity for them to meet other like-minded people. And they're having a breakfast at Lovey's, August 24th. It's a Thursday from 11:00, excuse me, 11:00 till noon. And those are my announcements.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Kraut.
I have no announcements tonight.
Okay. Councilmember Bozajin.
No announcements, thank you.
Okay. Mayor Pretem Weintraub.
I just wanted to say job well done to Mayor Shapiro for your speech at the Chamber, or the Mayor's Luncheon, and great job to the Chamber of Commerce. It was a wonderful event, even in the heat, so it was a job well done.
Thank you very much, and I will thank the Chamber of Commerce for putting on a wonderful Mayor's Lunch, and our fantastic Communications Department for all their great work and help, and we thank you to our U.S. Congressman Brownlee, Congresswoman Brownlee, and our state Senator Ben Allen, and all my colleagues and city staff for coming out and supporting. Appreciate that. I do want to thank Public Works and our Communications Department, our city, all our staff, our sheriffs and fire, who worked so hard to make sure we were safe ahead of time during the recent floods. We've had wildfires, we've had storms, we had an earthquake even, so the message there to the community is, be prepared. And we can, for all those things, the same message, be prepared, and anything we can do in that regard is important. School began today for LVUSD, and viewpoint starts shortly thereafter, so please take some extra time, drive carefully, be safe, give yourself extra time going to and from school or anywhere in the area. And along the school's announcements, Calabasas High School football team has its very first home game this Friday night at 7:00 o'clock. I want to make sure I'm looking to a parent of a Calabasas High School athlete as well, but please go out and support the Coyotes as they start a great season. Want to announce this, next week, the 28th, let me get the name right, is the Mayor's Youth Council, a special film showcase for, in advance of the 10th Annual Calabasas Film Festival. Everyone is invited to join the Mayor's Youth Council for a special movie showcase of a movie entitled The Reeducation of Molly Singer, by writer and Calabasas resident Todd Friedman, who will be there. Q&amp;A with Todd will follow after the movie, and you need to RSVP to our own city clerk, so in order to attend, it's Monday night, August 28th at 6:00 p.m. So don't miss it. Our Mayor's Youth Council, again, doing great things. And last but not least, just when you thought it was safe to go back in the pool at the Tennyson Swim Center, Saturday, we just got this hot off the press, Saturday, September 30th, the Saturday night event at the Tennyson Swim Center for the Calabasas Film Festival will be having a Jaws Experience Night with the 4X brand-new print of Jaws, with the actual shark will be there, apparently, so should be a lot of fun. That's the first thing I got, actually, just before coming up here tonight, so be, get ready for the film festival, it's coming. That's all I have for announcements, and turn to oral communication and public comment. And we have, very first is our Chamber, our ever-ready person who's here every time, Chamber C., former president Mark Levinson, along with Tal Ronan, Ronan, I'm sorry, who we've already spoke, spoken about, or Alicia did, with Crossroads Kitchen. Welcome.
Henry, Mark Levinson, I live in Los Angeles, and thank you. I'll hit a couple of things really quick, because I want to give Tal some chance. Also, his restaurant is, missing him very much right this second, so he needs to get back. But thank you for all the nice things you said about the Chamber and about Tal. We had 170 guests at the Mayor's Lunch, so that was a great event. Also, we want, of course, to thank and acknowledge Congressman Brownlee, and Senator Bill Allen, and everyone else that helped out and made it a great day. September 14th, our networking breakfast is going to be at Lovey's, J&amp;P Merchandising is the sponsor, and they will be there with some new things. Also, Epic, the emergency preparedness in Calabasas, we're moving forward on that. But most important tonight, allow me to introduce Tal, who is the owner of three Crossroads restaurants, the newest here in Calabasas. It is an all-vegan restaurant. I understand the food, I haven't had a chance to be there, is excellent, you're not going to necessarily know it's vegan. And let me tell you a little about the restaurant first. They were named as one of the best restaurants in the Los Angeles Times list of best restaurants, the only restaurant named in Calabasas, with Crossroads. So, they, they are doing a great job in a brand-new environment, and we look forward to having the Attorney's Forum meeting there for lunch as well, and they're going to accommodate it. A little bit about Tal, he's a founder and chef. He's written a book called The New York Times Bestseller, Conscientious Cook. He became known nationwide as a chef who prepared meals for Oprah Winfrey for her diet. And Tal, let me introduce you, why don't you tell us a few things about yourself?
Thank you so much, Mark. Thank you, Mayor, council members, it's an honor to be here. It was really great hearing the other presentations. We were lucky enough to support the Rotary Club through a dinner that we did, and also the women's group lunch. So, we're happy to be here. Calabasas has a strong initiative for the environment, and so do we. We share that mission. One of the best things you can do to combat global warming is to eat plant-based, even if it's not full-time. So, we're here for you guys. We've had a bit of a slow start, and really appreciate everyone's support, and hope to see you at the restaurant. Always ask for me, I split my time between Melrose and Calabasas, but I am here three days a week, so, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to tell you how much I absolutely love your restaurant. I've been a vegetarian for over 30 years, so I could not have been more excited when you opened here. But my son, who is the biggest meat eater ever, I, we went for a family dinner, he was not so excited at first, he thought it was incredible. So I urge everyone, meat eater, non-meat eater, to go try it out, it really is amazing, and you will not miss, you won't even notice that you're not eating real meat, so, that's my plug.
And you'll be there next Tuesday, right?
Will be there next Tuesday.
Okay. And I am, I am not a plant-based sole eater, but I certainly have enjoyed dining there and taking to-go food even, from there, and appreciate your positive positivity for the city as well and community, so, looking forward to many, many more good things. Welcome. All right. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak in addition online on any non-agenized items?
No, Mr. Mayor, no additional comments.
All right. We'll move on to, unless somebody needs a break, we'll move on to consent items 1 through 7, and do any of my colleagues wish to pull any of the consent items?
I'd like to pull item 4 for a brief comment.
Okay, item 4.
Likewise, or number 2.
Number 2? Number 2? Anyone on this side? Nope. All right, why don't we go ahead and start with Councilmember Kraut on item number 4, which is the recommendation toward five-year professional services agreement to Newberry Park Tree Services, and I won't go on, but go ahead.
And we don't need to go on. What I'll, what I wanted to share is, I was reading our packet today, and I was delightfully, not surprised, but delighted to see that our staff has done a fabulous job of outlining the RFP process. They have listed all of the bid rooms that they were posted at, along with the other means that they advertised. They listed all of the companies that pulled packets, they included the bid prices of all the competitors, they provided a summary afterwards saying which ones were selected and why. They had comments that included following up with those that didn't respond to certain items, and asked for why they didn't respond to those items, and they really provided us a wealth of information about the bid process, which I had not seen before, and I saw that, I pulled item 4, but it applies to all of the items that I've seen in today's packet. And so I just wanted to take a moment and say thank you to city staff for being transparent and thorough in the bid process, and I couldn't let that go unrecognized.
Thank you very much, and I, I'm sure everyone appreciates those comments. Councilmember Albrecht on item 2, related to recommendation on a professional services agreement with Becker Arena Products on DeAnza Sport Court Dashboard System.
Thank you. I echo Councilmember Kraut, in looking at the packets today, every one was just great. It's just what we wanted, and that was to have an analysis and transparency. And that also applies for number 2. There were, it was done perfectly. There was four, there were five reach-outs, they were from out of the country, one was domestic, so it made only sense to have that person, so no problem with the process, I thought it was excellent. But knowing that location, and we're talking about the rink that's at DeAnza, and, you know, the boards that surround it, called Dashboard, they need to absorb force, they need to be protected from the rain and the elements, they have to have density, and I read the packet on this item a number of times, but just have a concern about, I don't know, warranties or guarantees, or, because they're going to be abused. The ones that were put up there before were by the skaters that did that, and it lasted a long time. I didn't look at how they're constructed, but I just want to bring it by, I'm sure you did some homework on it, I'd just like to hear about it, how you feel about the longevity for it.
Thank you for that question. So, so this material is a fiberglass, so it's highly durable. The warranty, I'm not quite sure about that, we'll have to do some, some research on the warranty of it, but it is supposed to last multiple years due to the fiberglass, so it should be much stronger than wood, which is there now.
And they've used that product with other rinks before?
Yes, they've actually used that product, product, rinks around this area as well, so.
Okay, and you can understand my feelings about it being abused, because that's how they stop, you know, they just go right into, right into the boards, and, so, thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any members of the public or online wishing to speak on any of the consent items?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and no other council comments or questions? May I have a motion to approve consent items 1 through 7?
No move.
I've heard of a motion and a second.
Second.
A move and a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Thank you very much. And before we move on, does anyone need a short break? Or keep going? Keep going is the answer. All right. All right. We'll move on to continued business, item number eight, discussion of option available to the city for on-demand micro-transit program solutions. And Phil Lunsafame and Treya Desny are here to make the presentation. Welcome. And thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we're here tonight to talk about micro-transit. It is a project that the city of Calabasas has undertaken as a pilot. And you asked the staff to do some research and, and be a bit creative and come back to you with some ideas for a more permanent program. Tonight in our presentation, and we'll get it up here on the screen in just a second for you. We want to go through a bit of the, the program, the definition of micro-transit. What does that mean? What does that term mean to people? We'll describe our pilot program, how it came about, what, what the, the successes had that we've had. What are others doing in this area? We'll look at some other cities and counties. Then we'll go through a series of considerations for you based on what we've learned about these programs. And this is where we really need your feedback on how you want to shape and mold this permanent program. And then we'll have questions. As we go through those considerations, what we've done and you should have in front of each of you is we've built a scorecard for you so that you can follow the presentation. If you want to break right there, you've got an idea, you want to talk about it right then, we can do that. Or once we're finished, you can use the scorecard to help you track the information that we're looking for as well as what your colleagues have thought about those, those ideas. So with that, I will turn it over to Treya for the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, council members, Mayor Shapiro, Mayor and Mayor Protem Weintraub. So to provide some background, what is micro-transit? What's this word that we keep using? It is a multi-passenger transportation service that serves passengers using dynamically-generated routes. It's a form of on-demand service, pretty much a public transit form of Uber or Lyft. It is designed to kind of be a good balance between our fixed route system that you see all throughout the city and your own personal car. In February, our pilot began and we've been operating every weekend since then. Our pilot operates using our dial ride service. A passenger calls our service provider and she dispatches the driver. And we have served over 360 passengers between February and July. And a reminder that this is only operating on our weekends. Micro-transit is becoming more and more popular in the transit world. Many of these programs have the same principles, a service that provides flexible ride-sharing utilizing a mobile app. Here I have a few highlights from services in our area. Agora Hills utilizes Spare's software to allow increased demand for vehicles to be shifted to Lyft seamlessly within one application. You don't even know that you're taking a Lyft vehicle. Metro Micro operates in high-demand zones throughout LA County, but only offers rides between existing bus stops. Antelope Valley Transit Authority utilizes their micro-transit program to connect rural areas that had been without any public transit and connects them to transit centers. During peak times, Long Beach has low-speed vehicles operate in the downtown area, mostly Friday, Saturday nights, when people are out for dinner, when people are out hanging out, having a good time. Finally, Santa Clarita utilizes shuttles similar in size to our city shuttles instead of vans to offer higher capacity capability. Staff is recommending council members discuss options available to the city in regards to creating a permanent micro-transit program and provide directions to staff on preferred parameters. The following slides are questions posed in the report to help staff identify the needs and wants of the community. We have provided council members with a scorecard to help organize thoughts for you and for staff and to help track the discussion as mentioned. So to start off with, first and foremost, do council members believe that this type of service is important to our community when compared to other transportation programs?
I'm sorry, I, I'm going to ask where on our scorecard because we've got a lot of items here. Should we be marking these as we go or, or just listening for now?
For right now, we're getting into the discussion. So I'm going to pose these questions and let me know your thoughts on them as we go. They're not numbered, but we kind of do just go in order. So this is the first line is permanent program.
Okay, so you'd like to discuss, to discuss one by one at this point? Okay. I'll look to my colleagues. I, I, I can say quickly, yes, but I'll turn to Mayor Protem Weintraub.
Do you want to go first?
That's quite all right. I'll go last, I'll wait for everyone.
I would like to see this a permanent program, but I'd like to get the cost down instead of 105. It's expensive per pa, way too expensive per passenger. So yes, but different options.
We have some ideas for you, we'll, we'll get there.
Yeah, I know, I just wanted to make that caveat.
Councilmember Albrecht. Okay. Okay, Councilmember Kraut.
I'm on the fence. I think it's a, a great program. I think there's so many other alternatives like Uber and Lyft out there right now for the community. And I was always of the impression that the, one of the things about mass transportation is getting more people into a vehicle point-to-point as opposed to individual ridership. So maybe a question that goes along with it, it looks like we're doing about 10 rides a day, a little less than 10 rides a day, 72 a month, operating eight days a month, eight and a half days a month. I mean, are those all individuals? What's mostly individuals?
It's probably about 80% individuals just because of the timing, there aren't people trying to move at the same time. But that other 20%, we have had ride-sharing access to that. And that comes with, you know, the weekend might not, it already historically does not have as much ridership as during the week. So we will get into that a little bit more and see if maybe expanding it would help with that concern.
And I think the cost is reflective of that. I just don't see it as accomplishing the goals of mass transit.
Thank you. Councilmember Buzajin.
Permanent.
Okay. And my comment, I have a couple of questions, so I don't know whether I hold them or whether they're. So I'm going to say permanent, absolutely. A question, do we know if the ridership is of a certain age primarily? Are there age brackets? Is it seniors, is it not?
It, I did not do an actual survey of who is using it, but from what I do understand, it is mostly middle-aged and seniors.
Okay. And then I had written down the cost just to verify it. That was my question. So definitely the cost of ridership is too high unless, I'll, I'll start driving. I could use a third or fourth job. Are there, can we use funds from other shuttle programs that we have? If, reallocate those for services such as this in our community?
Yes, and I will get to that shortly.
Okay. And then my other question, which you're probably going to get to, are there any available grants? Whether they're metro, state, county, SCAG, private partnerships, available electronic vehicles, what, a charging station, anything that we could possibly look to to help the freight costs for us?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Those are my comments.
Mr. Mayor, if I might suggest, maybe we should go through the entire presentation.
Great.
Maybe you'll get the information, might help you form your questions.
Thank you. All right. Perfect.
The next consideration that I will ask is based on feedback from council members when we initially brought the pilot program. We want to confirm that we want a mobile app to be included in our program, especially since many members of the community might still wish to call in or utilize a web-based program. And this one is kind of our key decision when moving forward with this program. Should the service be turnkey or software? A turnkey service would provide the city with vehicles, drivers and the software. And if we did the software, the city would need to provide those vehicles and those drivers, either through another contract or through existing contract, which is kind of how we have created the pilot program, was through the existing contract.
But before we go on, what, what we do and why this is such an important question is if we do turnkey where we have software and vehicles, that's a commitment to then a lot of capital purchase. And, and we can do that and we'll figure out a program if that's what you want to do, own those vehicles. We have our, our electric vehicle program that we could use this as credit for. But again, it's a, it's an important question. Do we want to just lease it, get a mobile app and then go lease those vehicles? You know, pay somebody else to, to use their vehicles or do we want to buy our own?
Thank you, Phil. I just want to ask to clarify because I heard the, kind of the opposite and I probably, it's my hearing. The software-only portion is what you're referring to. The turnkey is where we'd have to provide the vehicles, not the other way around.
No, you, you had it correct.
I did hear you correct then.
Turnkey, they provide everything, software we would have to provide.
We have provide the vehicles under software.
Correct.
I just want to make sure we're on the same page. Okay, thank you.
And as was just discussed, this kind of does play into this next question, what kind of vehicles do we want? You know, this is a very important question if we are going to put in that capital and buy these vehicles ourselves if we go with software. And either way, if we do turnkey, what are we requesting the vehicles to be like? Do we want them to have bike racks to kind of increase that mobility option? Do we want to keep, keep going with our zero emission rollout plan, get a head start and start with these vehicles? What kind of size do we want to look at? Do we want to look at the big 15-passenger vans or a smaller size, more like our dialer ride vehicles, which are seven-passenger? And then any special design that we might want to have, such as making the taxis look, or the taxis, making the vans look like something or just having complimentary to our shuttle, our new shuttle designs. Currently, the pilot program is door-to-door. That means that if you live at 100 Parkway, Calabasas, you'll get picked up at 100 Parkway, Calabasas. The alternative would be stop-to-stop, which is what Metro Micro does. So that means that if I live at 100 Parkway, Calabasas, I might need to walk to the nearest bus stop, which could be at 300 Parkway, Calabasas. And so here I've provided an image of our line-one route, which gives an idea of where our existing stops are. So the question is, do we want to continue to be door-to-door and offer that flexibility? Or switch to stop-to-stop, which offers more efficiency for the vehicles? Should the program be expanded? Right now, it's weekend only, we can continue to have weekend only. It's operating nine to five. We can expand those hours, we can expand those days. What do you think should we get out of this program? And should the program be expanded based further than it already exists? Currently, the program allows for trips anywhere within city limits and to 10 out-of-city destinations such as Topanga Mall, the Canoga Transit Station, medical centers and religious centers. Between February and July, 83% of trips were taken only inside city limits. So this leaves a question of if we should continue operating these out-of-city destinations. One caveat I would like to mention is that if we can, if we discontinue the out-of-city destinations, staff still believes it's vital to continue doing that Canoga Parks Transit Station as it is a major regional connection. And then the map that I provided here shows the frequency of people going to specific places. There is an outlier around the Audi dealership. We do have one person who uses it almost every day to go to work, which is a great service to him. But the main centers you can see are the Commons and the apartments on Osvergenus Road. Comingling technology will allow the rider to more easily utilize multiple forms of transit to complete their trip. So I need to go downtown. I have a, I have to be there at nine o'clock. Right now, what I have to do is figure out, okay, what bus can I take to get there? Oh, I can take the LA DOT Cometer Express. Okay. It'll get there at this time. When do I need to leave? Where's that closest stop to me? Okay. That's when I need to get on. Now, when do I need to leave my apartment? When do I need to get on the road? How am I going to get there? All of that will be done seamlessly in the app if we do comingling technology. You tell it, I'm here at my house, I need to go downtown. And it will figure out all of those routes and all of the timing and get you there when you need to be there. And so is this something that we think will be beneficial to the community? The buzzword is park once. So the Calabasas Road Business Center has Civic Center Way, has Civic Center, the Hilton, the Commons, the Courtyard and Old Town. Many people park at the Commons and pick something up at Barnes &amp; Noble and then get in the car, go to Trader Joe's, pick up something for lunch. And so you have a very short trip that maybe doesn't necessarily need to be made. And you have a lot of these short trips happening in a really small area. So this would be potentially in addition to the other micro-transit that's citywide is, do we want to have a low-speed vehicle, an electric little vehicle that rides around? And can be, you can call it up on your mobile app and be, hey, I'm over at the Old Town Park and Ride. And it'll go and take you to the library. So is that something that we could potentially look into in addition to this bundle? I've created a cost proposal based on current contracts, estimates and ridership. This is subject to change based on a lot of the answers to the questions tonight, based on how much we want to add to this program. As you can see, we have that cost per passenger for line-one is much smaller currently than our current weekend service. But if we do a seven-day expansion, that cost goes down even below the line-one.
Treya, I'm so sorry to interrupt. When you're talking about line-one.
Yes.
That, is that Metro's line or what?
That is our line-one. That is our citywide, does an hour and a half loop around the entire city.
That's our city shuttle.
Yes, that is our city shuttle, correct. And so if we're able to, if we decide to expand the weekend program and replace line-one, it would generate a lot of cost savings in the long run. And you can also see I've done, looking at if we do line-one, keep line-one during the week, do the weekend and add software, what that cost could look like or what completely replacing line-one could look like. And these numbers are not including gas for line-one, that is a separate item versus our demand response service currently, the contractor is in charge of paying for the gas. And so it was asked before sources of funding, if the cost were to go down, we could continue to utilize Proposition A and Proposition C local return that we receive from Metro. We can also do fare offsets. We currently have a fare system set in place. There are also a couple of grants, like the Clean Transportation Funding Grant is coming up. It will be due in November. And then there's also some zero emission grants for obtaining new vehicles if we want to do that capital. And then, sorry. We've also listed utilizing the general fund as an option to kick-start the program prior to receiving any grant funding if that is something that the council wants to entertain.
This is probably the main consideration. Is this program something that you would want to use general funds for? We understand as we go through the budget process how important our reserve is and, and that is, is guarded very closely. Is this a program that the council would want to jump out and do right away? And we're willing to use some of those general funds? Or do you want us to wait until we can obtain grant funds? Depending on whether we were to replace line-one with this service or not, we might be able to fund it all with our Prop A and C, which we're doing right now for line-one and, and the other lines during the day. So those are questions that we want some discussion and direction on.
And finally, are there other things that council members want to see be included as part of this program? So now that we've discussed the parameters that I'm looking for, I want to share a quick, where do we go from here? So we initially began with a pilot, then staff took this item to the Traffic and Transportation Commission and to council now in order to identify the wants of the community. Now we can go straight to creating an RFP, a request for proposal to, or we can confirm the existing input from commissioners, the service provider and council with the community. So we can go out into the community and see what they say. And then once an RFP has gone out, staff will present a successful bidder to council and begin service. As part of community input already received, staff presented this item to the July Traffic and Transportation Commission. They recommended utilizing a mobile app and thought that comingling was a necessity and were overall in support of the expansion of the program. and were overall in support of the expansion of the program. And so this is where I'm going to ask for direction and any questions?
Thank you very much. I think we'll have plenty of questions. So I'll turn to my colleagues, starting with Mayor Pratim Weintraub.
Thank you so much for this great presentation. I was really excited to see this come back so quickly. So I have a few questions, so bear with me.
Of course.
Right now, we don't have any first mile, last mile service, right? So you'll, you can take like the public transportation, but it'll just go towards to certain locations, right? But then people might still have to walk like their first mile or last mile.
So right now it's door to door, so there is no-
But just on the weekends, I'm saying.
On the weekends.
Just this program.
Just this program.
Right.
It's completely door to door. There is no first, last mile.
Okay, so, right. Sorry. So just, just the pilot program on the weekends is so, okay. So I'm absolutely in support of extending it, expanding the program. But I want to see it with like a clean vehicle, like a clean, like more modern technology than what we currently have. I think you hit on something about like our downtown or the area around here. People are getting in their vehicles for way too short of a trip. And I think that's where we can really make some improvements. And we have a lot of people that work throughout this area, exactly what you touched on. And I know a lot of communities have introduced programs like the circuit vehicles and that they run in downtown communities just for situations like you mentioned. So I'd be interested, it's, in some instances, it is like a Metro Micro. Some of their vehicles are like that. But I think it would be worth looking into.
Yes.
I know you and I spoke about the beach bus. And such a great program, but so difficult to utilize. That in order to get a ticket to the beach bus, you have to personally come down to City Hall and hope that Trey is here and not at lunch or in a meeting and you have to buy your tickets here. So the goal is to make these public transportation options easy for people. So I'm all in support of the app. And I even, or, and I was thinking about like, I know Metro's even trying to consolidate all of their different technology. They want to get away from their tap cards and go towards like one more, one singular web device. But if people don't have the means to use the app, I mean, I know we can fit, there's other alternatives. But overall, I'd like to see one app that you can utilize for all the different transit uses. I think we should definitely go to the Canoga Station. I'm interested in why would somebody call the city shuttle? Instead of calling like Uber or Lyft to go to Kaiser, let's say. Like why would someone use this?
The short and sweet answer is it's so much less expensive. You know, I don't often, no, I haven't done an Uber to Kaiser, but it could be ten, fifteen, twenty dollars, especially when you look at surge pricing versus this is a standard, definitely we're already sitting at less than five dollars per ride. And, you know, having it be funded and those offset costs to help with.
And I should know the answer to this, but from like line six oh one, or what line comes here from Metro?
From Metro, it's the one sixty-one?
Okay. And that goes like on Park Granada?
It goes down Park Granada, up Parkway Calabasas, takes the freeway, gets off at Lost Virginus, takes Agora Road all the way into Agora Hills.
Okay, so like what I envision is somebody, you know, taking the Canoga line, the station, you know, public transit into Calabasas and then they need to go, go on to their further destination. Cause, so that's exactly what this program would do. Right? It would, it would help them continue on.
Exactly.
Right, so, cause right now, like Monday through Friday, there's a gap. Like you get dropped off and then you can't go any further. Is that correct?
Why wouldn't they just continue on the, on the line? Cause the line goes all the way through it.
But it doesn't go to like individual like destinations, but this would be on demand, right?
So if you, you're saying if you come into Calabasas, let's say the stop is right out here. You drop off, but you need to go to your friend's house that lives in the middle of town.
Or I need to go to work.
Or you need to go to work.
Yeah, so like I've taken the Metro bus into Calabasas. And then how am I getting to the next destination?
Back to first mile, last mile.
Right. So like I definitely see that as an issue for people that rely on public transit. That are coming into this community to work or just utilize public transportation. So, yeah, but I'm very much in favor of us consolidating everything into one app. I think that will be a huge, that'll really help improve the desirability to use it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Crowe.
Oh, I'm so sorry. One last thing, grant funding. I'm not support, I don't want to use our general fund. I think that we would definitely qualify for the A and C.
Thank you. Councilmember Crowe.
All right, thank you. I, I have a few questions, I guess. First of all, what do we have currently for accessibility for somebody who is disabled and, and needs transportation here in the community?
We have a few options. So our dial-a-ride is the door-to-door service. It used to operate Monday through Sunday, but we have now taken that use in Saturday, Sunday. Those, they still have priority, but now we're offering other rides because it wasn't being utilized as much as during the week. And so those rides are still happening. Those are wheelchair accessible vans. We also on our, all of our shuttles, they are all wheelchair accessible. They all have wheelchair ramps and lifts.
Okay, great. I'm still in favor of increasing our public transportation, but the environmental impact of individual rides is still something I'm kind of hung up on. So I know, for example, Uber has Uber Share or something to that effect. Where you pay a lesser price, but the ride would pick up other people along the way going to a similar destination. Does our software work like that or is it all point to point?
It would all be completely ride share. And so as long as somebody is still going that way, it will try to pick up as many people as possible.
So once the demand increases, we're going to have more than one individual rider in each?
Exactly. Once the man increases, we'll have a lot more ridership statistics.
Okay. But ultimately, we'd still stick with a certain number of vehicles. So it would just mean that the timing of those deliveries wouldn't be as prompt as it might be if you were getting an individual ride, let's say from your home to your, to your work.
Right. Now we use two vehicles on the weekend. And sometimes we might even be able to get away with one. If we were to expand to seven days exponentially, but the idea is to have the right number of vehicles to cover and then expand as we gain ridership.
Okay. So, you know, I would be in favor of this. I would just want to curtail our expansion until we actually got to a true ride shared program, whatever level that might be. But when we're doing ten rides per day, it just doesn't seem like we're ready to expand yet. I think we need to get the word out there more, get better funding for the program and, and move on before we expand it. That would be my suggestion there. As far as the rest of the, the questions that are in front of us here, the, you know, the, the turnkey program with the, the lower level of investment is certainly where I'd like to see us start. The, as we're chasing grants and stuff like that, I would certainly like to see that increase and I would not support using general funds at this point in time. As far as the kinds of vehicles, I think, you know, bike racks and, and things are important. Because as we turn this into a true, you know, public transportation program, people need to be able to have that ability there. The door-to-door service, I get it. So we'll, I, I would say continue that for now. But I think it's something that we need to really make sure that that ride shared mentality increases so that we don't have one individual, you know, just abusing the system as his own, his or her own personal chauffeur. That's not really what it was meant to be, right?
Correct.
And as far as the locations outside the city, I, I, I would go with the other ten locations if they've been carefully selected as, you know, maybe not ten, but certainly healthcare facilities outside the city I think are important. I think the Canoga Metro Station is important. Not so sure about taking them to shopping centers outside of the city. We want them to shop here. So I would stick with the, the healthcare and the public transportation stops only. But if that's more than two and less than ten outside the city, I'm good with that.
We saw most of it was going to healthcare and shopping.
Again, the healthcare is good. We want to support our residents as they need to get to their doctor's appointment. But if they want to shop, bring them to the Commons. Yeah. I think that was the most of my notes, so I'll turn it over back to our mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And turn to Councilmember Buzajin.
A few questions and comments. In looking at the cost per trip, that was, seemed to me very high, way too high. And I was looking also at the other comparisons you made and I don't know why ours is so much higher. Is there a reason why?
Compared to?
You had a comparison chart here.
Oh, yes.
I, I think those were, I think on the other services, we just listed the fee that they would charge. Did we put the cost?
Well, there was actually a total cost per person that you were, I mean, it was confusing, but I thought that we, ours was much higher.
Yes, so currently for just the weekend, because our passengers, we have passengers, we have plenty of passengers as far as our service provider is concerned. And that's one of the reasons that she would like to see us software is to help with dispatching so we can get more people in here. But because we do have a lower ridership compared to what we might see.
That's causing that?
That's causing it, yes. It's low ridership.
Costs, okay.
Correct.
That's related to another one of my questions.
Perfect.
Did we do any kind of study showing whether, cause you had the total number of trips, but do we know how many people that is? Like in other words, is it a couple people taking this over and over and over again? Or are we serving a broader number of people that are only using it very sporadically?
I have looked at it. I did not do a full analysis and I can bring that back.
See, cause that would influence my decisions too, because if we're not serving that many people, it's just being used as a personal service by just a few people, then I'm less inclined to be supportive of expanding it. And I was wondering that as I was watching, I was looking at the numbers. Cause our ridership did not seem very high in the first place. So a few people using it every day or every other day would spike that number. So I'd like to see that number eventually. And then the other question I had is kind of a strange one that hasn't been asked yet. I just noticed that there's, there's not a single location outside the city that is in a, I mean, north, there is nothing, but there's nothing south and there's nothing west. So it's all going east into the San Fernando Valley. Is there no, do we know, is there no demand in going either south or north?
This was-
I'm sorry, south or west?
Um, so this, we just cut the same destinations as we were utilizing for the dial-a-ride program. My, I have not had people request rides outside of those areas. But that is definitely something that we can look into to see if there would be that demand.
Well, but you don't offer it, so they're not going to request what you don't offer.
Exactly.
So what I'd like to do is in the future, because you have like a dozen routes just going east, I'd like to explore if there's a way to find out what destination points either south or west you could find. And whether there is a demand, maybe there's nothing. Now like I don't, I, for example, I don't know what you're counting as outside the city. Technically, King Gillette Ranch is outside the city. Are you counting that as outside the city?
We have not had people go there.
But do you offer that?
Consider it, I do consider it outside of the city limits, so it's within our boundaries.
I mean, it's hard to say, no one's asked for it, we don't offer it, so no one's going to say.
I have had people ask specifically the service provider to provide rides to maybe the Tarzana Medical Center. Or not the Tarzana, but one that's nearby. And so they do request it if it's not on the list. And so far I have not gotten, I'm sure that we could see what other people want to do. They might not request it because they just see it's not an option to them.
Right.
I do get requests like that.
But I think one like King Gillette Ranch might be popular and I don't know what people's destination points are. Like on the west side of town, a lot of people travel west rather than going east into the San Fernando Valley. And we're not, we're not really offering anything. So I just want you to look at that. And I think it's fair to ask for one or two that are not just going east.
If, if I could maybe piggyback on that and give you some thought, maybe we would like to do some surveying and get those questions answered. Through Survey Monkey, we can do something like that in utilizing our communications to find out and then really tailor the program. So as, as you're thinking about, do you want to go write to RFP and do something or do you want to go check with the community? Maybe we can do some of that research with the community.
Like for example, just, just throwing one out, you go to the Topanga Plaza area in Westfield. You know, in the other direction, a lot of people go to the Oaks, Thousand Oaks. So I, I could see if you offered that, I think more people would go. But if you, you're not offering it, I doubt they're going to come to you and say, will you take me over there? So take a look at it. If, maybe, maybe it's not as popular as I'm thinking, but I would think there's something that people would go to that you're not offering.
Definitely.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you. Thank you for this report. I was excited when I saw it on the agenda. And, you know, the idea of, it's in early stages and it could be dynamic as witnessed by other cities. And it reminds me of an ad I saw years and years ago where probably everybody saw this in some form. A company is on television and they sold, they were selling their product online. And they finally get the results and one, they sell one and they're kind of excited. Then they sell five and yeah, we're, we're, then they sell ten and they show the meter. And then finally it's a hundred and then they sell a thousand and they sell ten thousand. And when they got to the ten thousand, they were, you know, what are we going to do now? We don't, we're not set up for this. So I think it'll build over time. And I think the way we can do that most efficiently is definitely what you had mentioned. Philip, is that do a poll of some kind? I look at this and I say to myself, what do I want is going to be different than what someone else wants in their age level? And students versus adults versus seniors. Some want to go out at night during the week, some want to go on the weekend. If we could put a poll, include some of these or many of them on our city website, this is where we're going to get some insight. I can answer all these for myself, but I can't read other people's minds. I'm inclined certainly when I look at this for the turnkey and get off to a, a soft start. But if it takes off like it probably will if we do a good analysis and that would include a cost analysis. And that's why I say turnkey because, you know, we're not dealing with a lot of revenue right now. So why put ourselves exposed, exposure? Then a couple of comments. I was recently on a van and I went quite a ways on it. I was actually visited a hydro pilot in Yorba Linda this week with the water district. So I rode in the van and getting out of the van was a big problem for me. I'm a former athlete, so usually I'm pretty agile. But the ground from the seat to the street was an additional at least six or eight inches. So I had to slide out of the seat and go airborne a little bit. So they'll have to have steps for seniors. But I like the idea where people can ride with their friends and line that up and maybe four people could meet in the van and go together. Little things like going somewhere and then waiting, maybe the van can wait while someone's picking up a prescription or just picking up something at the cleaners. The type of vehicles I certainly see hopefully in the future is EV. And if it is our vehicle, it would certainly pose a problem as far as charging is concerned. Cause the more ridership we have, the more vehicles we have. So we're going to have to add charging stations. So, we are gonna have to add charging stations and, um, so that's another thought in the future, but only as we grow. Um, where are we gonna park these vehicles if they're ours? We have enough trouble right now. Uh, we want them to be safe cause they'll be new. Uh, and insurance is higher if it's not safely parked. So, there, there's a lot of questions, uh, they're good questions. Um, I'm, I'm excited to see if we can get the answers for them. And, uh, from what I hear from the council, you know, everybody's in favor of it. Um, how we build it out and the format that it's gonna take. Um, I know that with the proper media attention, um, the city will pick up on it. And just by coincidence, when I got back, uh, actually on Saturday, a van drove by my house with somebody. Uh, I saw the Calabasas insignia on the side of it, so, uh, I like the idea. I'm hoping to support it as it goes further.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, you want me to go first? Did you have some? Okay. Councilmember Kraut.
Yeah, thank you. I was looking at my notes after I finished speaking and I realized I did miss one. Uh, with regards to co-mingling technology, the only thing I'd like you to consider is when we find software that joins with another, let's say, metro software, we don't have control over their changes in the future. So, we might find ourselves trying to constantly keep up with the others that we're trying to link up with. So, I don't know if that's been explored before, but I would certainly be in favor of something that's tried and true. Uh, I don't know if they have standard protocols to follow. But if it's something new, if it's a frontrunner software, if it's, you know, first-time technology, I would suggest that we steer clear of it because those are often superseded rather quickly. And when we're trying to tie with other organizations, those decisions become out of our hands. That was all.
Thank you very much. Um, I have a number of comments and questions and I'm not gonna repeat the ones I just, uh, stated earlier unless you want me to.
If you want to, go ahead.
Do you have them already down or if, if, I'm happy to repeat them. They were, they were the question of using funds which you touched on from other shuttle. If we used the funds properly from other shuttle services for this type of program, uh, in lieu of or in, in addition to. And were there available grants such as metro? Looking into all applicable grants, state, county, SCAG. I know whenever I get something, I'll send it on from SCAG and private partnerships, whether they be, uh, an electronic vehicle or EV charging or something of that nature. They might have something and to bring the cost down, which you've already heard from, I think, a majority, if not all of us. I like the ideas Mayor Protem Weintraub indicated, the first and last mile connectivity, uh, being important. I, I would think that would help us if we're looking at grants from certain entities as well because that is something they don't have and that would allow them to promote that as well on their, on their services. Also environmentally friendly and clean energy, uh, type of vehicles are important to me. And, and the numbers we have here, which we looked at, which are low and the cost very expensive for the amount of ridership, we're only using this though now on the weekends. And, um, I, I don't know what promotion there's been on the, uh, so far or if we've kept it pretty low-key just for the initial, uh, outreach here. But I would think expanding this program to, and if I read your, on page sixteen, the considerations fiscal impacts sources of funding on that slide. Uh, seven-day expansion has a huge difference to the cost per passenger. So, I would think expanding and advert, advertising this program to our community, uh, at a large, in a large way would increase the ridership here. So, on, as far as the few of the questions you've asked on the, the scorecard I have here, which is always fun, I agree with the turnkey, which is what you have recommended. And I believe I've heard my colleagues, yes, to a mobile application. Yes, to me, at least in, in one of the vehicles with bike racks or bike capability, especially if we're tying it into transit, uh, first and last mile. I thought the seven-passenger vehicle, at least for one of them, would be appropriate. Uh, the number of vans and passengers was pinned on ridership in need and want and grants. Uh, city of Calabasas logo, uh, of course, the red tailhawk unless we have another design recommended. Continue the door-to-door service, yes, for now. Uh, program expansion, expansion to seven days, yes. Uh, originally, I was gonna say Thursday to Sunday until I read your, uh, anticipated dollar amounts, cost per year and cost per passenger. And it makes much better sense to be a, a seven-day expansion according to your numbers. So, that makes better sense. How many vehicles? Again, depending on usage and we can always grow. Uh, I agree with the comments made, the city limits plus outside, uh, locations. And that really is something that could be determined, uh, down the road, certainly medical facilities. And, uh, I do, uh, although I like the idea that people can go out of the city to shop, I would tend to agree with, uh, Councilmember Kraut's comments in that regard. Co-mingling technology, I am for that with the caveats mentioned. I'd wanna know details, benefits of co-mingling to the city and, and risk of any potential, uh, loss of control or problems. A low-speed vehicle pilot for Calabasas Road Business Center in Old Town, I think is a great idea. Uh, I'd love to see that. I mean, we're talking about worrying about speeding in our city, mall hall and everywhere else. It'd be nice to see something that we're promoting on a lo, on a much lower speed, so. Source of funding, again, grants, grants, grants. I'm a huge supporter and there are infrastr, infrastructure and transportation grants out there to get, especially now and as soon as we can, so I'm supportive of that. Uh, rates a little higher. I know I don't, we don't wanna do that, but if we're talking about going outside the city, let's say, to a shopping, uh, area, if that was what council wished a, as, as a result of this, I might say, ye, yes, they could be a little higher, not a lot. But certainly not to uber lift numbers, but something a little higher. General funds, I know it is not a, a wish right now, but if we wanna get the program going, there might be a need to use some general funds. So, I wouldn't be, uh, adverse to hearing about that or considering it with my colleagues. But whatever we all want. So, I hope that answers the score sheet and the comments from my point of view. Um, any other council comments or questions on this? Seeing that, oh, yeah, Councilmember.
I agree with you. I didn't state it explicitly, but, um, we should be charging more per trip.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Kraut.
Sorry, the, the cost per ride was brought up one more time. Seventy thousand for weekend service, two days a week. At that rate, it would be two hundred and forty-five thousand for a seven-day expansion, but you've got one seventy-five listed. Where's the savings come from?
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Sure. Seventy thousand dollars is the cost for weekend service. That's thirty-five thousand dollars a day. If we take thirty-five thousand and multiply by seven for seven days a week service, I'd get two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, but your cost per year is only one seventy-five? Is there an economy of scale or something I'm missing?
I can't quite remember what I did. I believe it is an economy of scale, but I can't, um, right now tell you what it is, what met, uh, what methodology I used. I will get back to you on that and, uh, perhaps refine the number.
I, I, I think in general, it's close enough. We're not gonna derail the discussion here, but please look into it, yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
And thank you for that. On that note, I, the reason I looked at it and thought it made sense with the reduced cost per passenger, I presume a, a much increased ridership level, uh, if we went to seven days a week as opposed to the weekend. So, the cost per person would be less, but that's just my presumption.
Yes. Um, the cost per passenger for the seven-day expansion, I used, um, our current line-one ridership and just added the weekend and the line-one.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Any, uh, members of the public, Madam Clerk, wishing to speak on this item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Um, I guess the question is, do you, do you have direction? Do you feel you have direction from council?
Yes. Uh, I think, um, for the most part, the council is pretty consistent across the board. Uh, there's a few things that we need to go figure out, uh, maybe where outside the city, maybe might wanna test what, um, tolerance is for higher fares. Um, definitely, uh, electric vehicle. Um, I think, um, most of you wanted to look at that, um, the, the Calabasas Road Business District, uh, having a, a low-speed vehicle, uh, service. So, we'll do that. We'll work with communications and try and put together, uh, some surveys so that we can get out to the greater community and, and get some input on their tolerance for some of these things that you've indicated you'd like to see. And then perhaps bring this back, uh, one more time before we prepare an RFP.
That, that would be great and we appreciate this presentation and all your hard work. Look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to informational reports. The check register for the period, July twenty-ninth to August eleventh, twenty-twenty-three. Seeing no questions, no one online with questions on this matter? Madam Clerk? Nope. We'll move on to task force reports and we'll start with Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you. Uh, we've got the Queen Power Alliance coming up. Uh, just a little, couple comments about this Queen Power Alliance that, uh, our city is involved in. Uh, they now serve thirty communities. Uh, we're getting three more in March. Uh, they're, uh, have become an investment-grade investments. Um, and they're able to, uh, have additional open lines of credit through issuing the bonds. So, they're moving right along and, uh, they're in great shape, uh, to pounce on, uh, energy opportunities when the price is right, uh, cause they have the funding to do that. Meeting with Mayor Protem. We have a meeting, uh, this week, uh, on the economic development. I'm looking forward to that and doing, uh, making future plans now that the summer is winding down. And, uh, as far as sustainability is concerned, I did mention about the heliport that I visited. Uh, I'm gonna discuss this with Mayor Shapiro on our sustainability. Um, Bravo sixty-nine, uh, really would like to see if somehow we could have another one and maybe work it out with the cost. I've got a lot to talk about, so it's very exciting. Cause our situation for, uh, fire is only gonna get worse and worse and worse. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Kraut.
Uh, thank you. Last Wednesday, I attended the Contract Cities Annual Board of Directors Meeting and Dinner with, uh, Councilmember Bazagian and Councilmember Albrecht as well. And Sheriff Luna spoke there and gave us an update of, uh, the challenges he's faced since, uh, taking his position and the things that he's been doing to, uh, to try to turn, uh, some of the problems around in the department. And, uh, it was great to hear, uh, all the efforts that he's, uh, uh, been inspiring in that department. And we, uh, we love our sheriffs here, uh, and we love all the great things that he's trying to do.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mayor Protem Weintraub.
You and I had a public safety meeting, was that last, last week?
Yes.
And we discussed, we discussed a lot of items. I should've written it down. Um, but I know staff, do you have a list of some of the things? Do you, no, you wanna go over the list?
It's late.
Okay. Well, staff's gonna be coming back with some. Staff's gonna be coming back with things. But, um, Mike Dyer and Debbie Larson are making tremendous project progress on the issues that the council has directed staff to do. So, very excited about all the work coming from public safety. Oh, let's see. Oh, also, I know that Terry Dipple's going to be coming back to talk to us about the hazard mitigation plan. Yeah, I'm gonna let Kindon talk a lot about this, so, but, good meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Bazagian.
Um, before the next council meeting, uh, September eighth to tenth, there's the Fall Educational Seminar for the California Contract Cities Association. And I'll be speaking at that seminar, giving a presentation on upcoming, uh, legislation, things that are appearing on the ballot, uh, in the future propositions and also court cases. All affecting municipal government.
Thank you. And, uh, I have, as mentioned, Emergency Preparedness Public Safety Meeting with lots of great work being done and it's gonna come back to our council soon. Uh, also attended, as mentioned earlier, that, a movie with Councilmember Albrecht, uh, on the fires up in Paradise and, and emergency preparedness. Very, very powerful. And the CPA meeting coming up, you covered. And I've attended, uh, some SCAG, more SCAG meetings, uh, related to legislation, uh, some of which, uh, is brought by our own representatives. And, uh, an opposition was raised to one particular item, which I'll be sharing with council. The League of Cities also has a, a position taken with a opposition letter on that as well pertaining to the governmental changes. Um, tomorrow, tomorrow's the Valley Economic Alliance, uh, board meeting tomorrow night, I'll be attending. And tomorrow, I will be joining Councilmember Albrecht for a celebration of the Wings Over Wendy's annual event as well. That's all I have. We'll look to, uh, our city manager who has anything to report, including congratulations to him and his family.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple items. Uh, one, as a follow-up, uh, um, both Mayor, you and, uh, the Mayor Protem mentioned our public safety task force. So, um, a big thank you again to the public works staff for, um, being available and ready and prepared for the, for the storm. But also, just immediately after the storm happened, our public works team rolled out our speed radar trailer to get that in position right before school started. So, that is on, um, Mall Holland right now between AC Stell and the high school, uh, in that area. And so, um, we've already started collecting data on that and we'll be sharing that with, um, our friends at the, the station to be able to monitor that and then enforce, uh, appropriately. Also, just wanted to let the council know that, uh, Phil and I had the opportunity last week to meet with the superintendent and the new high school principal, uh, Mr. Whatkey. And, uh, welcome Mr. Whatkey to the community and also make that connection as, as we continue to build that relationship with, uh, the new principal and the staff at, uh, uh, the school district.
Thank you very much. And, and we didn't get to hear from him tonight, but we're always thrilled to have Deputy De Matteo here and he's very happy when we finish before ten. Um, all right. Uh, are there any requests for future agenda items or information items? Seeing none. Uh, we will actually adjourn into closed, continue closed session tonight and then we'll come out. But when we do adjourn, we'll be adjourning tonight in memory of my rhetoric to a regularly scheduled, our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three at seven PM. So, we're adjourned in a closed session now at nine eighteen.